Just returned from the little airport tour. Only other things, I believe, is that we have to go through the assessments on the city properties and make a decision. So...
So we're just talking about the estimated property tax 2023 add net on.
Right. We would add on the 23 estimated and the...
And the specials in each town, right?
Change in minimums.
Oh, and the special.
So the thought process with that is only if they sell at the auction. If they don't sell at the auction, then after that, you're going to be lucky to just get rid of the property.
Well, you know, there's another way of looking at this. So let's say the owner, or the one, let's say, Lynn City, has a friend that comes in to the auction and buys a property back for her, or relative. By not having the 23 specials and property taxes on there, they could buy without paying then.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, but they're still going to end up getting at least the minimum sale price and some money coming in. I mean, it's like...
So the way it is now,
Right.
if these owners would have somebody come in and buy this property, they would get it for what you guys set the price last month. And the 2023 would be wiped away. But you guys adding that 23 onto the minimum sale price, unless they have to pay them.
Right, but I mean,
You know?
if you were to collect most of it instead of all of it, I mean, it's better than nothing too, so.
I know.
I mean, all I, the only trouble I have is if you put this minimum sale price with these specials on there and it's, your likelihood of selling them is going to decrease. I mean, because if you did that as the minimum sale, it's like, I mean, you have this house here that with the specials and the delinquent taxes, that's $6,800. Well, if you would get three grand for it, isn't that better than not selling it? You understand what I'm saying?
I do. I can understand.
Because you're going to recoup the losses. Second of all, it's out of the county's hands again, which is what we don't want to be holding properties, so. I guess in my opinion, I think I would just leave it as it is and just hope that they move. I don't know. I mean, 70%, something's better than all or nothing.
How long did they stay out there like this? Was it two, three years?
At this price?
Yeah.
It used to be where we couldn't change it until the next year when you appraise it again.
Oh, wait, the next year?
But the law changed now. If somebody would come in and say, "I'm going to offer you $500", I could come to you guys at the next meeting and you could lower that price now.
Oh, if somebody offered it and you decided to pay it, yeah.
Yeah, like after the sale, if nobody buys it, like the sale, they come in in October, December, and say, "I'll pay $500 for this", you guys could do, you could change that price. Before, the law was that you couldn't for a whole year.
Well, I guess, because my thought process is the people owning the houses, getting back into them is the best case scenario. If they buy them back at the auction or have someone buy it back for them. If you increase the price, you increase the likelihood of them not getting it back. I mean, no matter what the number one goal is for it, to get out of the county tax world, out of the hands of the county and onto the tax rolls again, so. I feel like increasing the prices just might not be worth the risk. I think I'd rather keep them lower and increase the likelihood of them transferring to either, either back to the current owners or to someone else and not have us have to worry about, because most likely, if nobody buys it, the alternative generally is the house gets destroyed. I mean, really. I mean, somebody's probably going to buy them if they're decent enough, but I'd take the chance that someone buying them for $2,500, then nobody doing it because it's too high and then coming back wanting to buy $500 later. So I guess my opinion is I would leave the specials and stuff off just for the likelihood of someone buying it.
The chances of these owners coming back and paying for it, we'll just let it go delinquent again, I'm sure, and then we'll have all these fees and everything else.
I know, but I mean, at the same time, I mean, the goal is to get these houses lived in, most likely, you know? I mean, if the county has them, we're not going to rent them out or do nothing. So then what happens? We usually end up selling them dirt cheap to somebody anywhere, giving them away or whatever. So I think you're not out, you're increasing the chance of having a crappier situation by adding another $1,300 or $500 to something that you might not even get already.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. I know I had one city auditorium that, you know,
They would like the specials.
that I checked into it because, so they could recoup their money to the house now.
I get it, but in a situation where people already supposedly or obviously aren't affording it, increasing it to try and recoup those funds is just lowering your chances of getting any of those. That's what I think.
I think she was saying if it would sell, you know?
Oh, I get that. And you know what? If it does, if, so here's a, okay, so, let's say we don't incorporate the specials in the minimum sale price, but we get above that price anyway. So like this one house, $2,640 was the minimum price we sold.
Right.
$3776 is what the specials and the estimated taxes would be. Let's just say you get $4,000 for it. You still pay all those things back then?
No. If we get $4,000 for it, anything over that $2,640, $880?
Goes back to the other people.
Goes back to the previous owner. They have 90 days to come in and claim that money. And if they don't come in and claim it, I have to send it to the state. I'm claiming property.
And so the only way the cities would get it would be is if it went for that price and we already had it in their earmarked, then they would get their specials. But if not, if you get that same amount, but you didn't claim the specials, then you can't go get them.
So like if, we would get $2,640 for that house. The first thing I'd do with that money is I have to apply it towards the specials. So all the cities get off their specials. After that, I apply it to the oldest tax.
Sure. So we would get short technically, and the city still gets their specials. You were trying to put the specials on, so the cities got theirs plus us.
Well, the price that you guys have now, we would recoup the three years' taxes and the specials.
Right.
But let's say you would only have one, like $2,000. Cities would get their specials, then we would pay off the oldest tax, and after that, everything just gets abated, gets written off, but...
I know, but even in the long run, if you want to talk about it, it's cheaper than us managing a property. Like, so I mean, in my mind, adding to that price and increasing it is only going to increase the likelihood nobody buys. I would leave it off and just keep them where they are.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, that's my opinion. I just, I feel like if you add another $1,000 to a house that maybe nobody wants, then you're getting...
And also, we end up with it and we got to take care of it.
I'd rather take $2,500 than zero, I mean, it sounds so.
Right.
I'd say let's just leave them as they are. Okay. And forward, I'll hate mail to the auditor's office. She'll make sure I get it.
Do what?
Forward, I'll hate mail to the auditor's office and she'll make sure I get it. I don't know if anybody's going to care. Okay, so with that being solved, the only other thing was the miscellaneous items, which was the building permits. Josh, you got?
No, they're right beside Gary. Elena, beside Gary.
Okay. You don't have nothing to bring up, no issues with anything, or?
Yeah, first of all, if that's why they're going to look at remodels.
Oh, they're just remodeling in current area.
You got all three of them, that was going to be all three?
Well, I mean, if there's...
Building permits, Halsner. Yeah, Groon Field there.
Chris is pulling, they're remodeling the house.
And Mike Abbertz.
Building permits for John Groenfelder's pole building.
Moving in, moving out. Yard can be setback right at 125, that's the minimum. You're dealing with Abberts. The yard will be big shock and the highway is 125 as well. He's going to be right at that.
All three of them are okay then?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve all three building permits.
I second.
Okay, with the motion in the second to approve the three building permits, one for Mike Abbertz's shop, another one for John Groenfelder's pole building, and another one for Chris Feigl's remodel. Everything looks good and no issues. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Permits approved. And we have a joint powers agreement for provision of emergency management services for Burley County and Emmons County. My assumption, this is Mary Singer's.
Yep.
Joint Powers Agreement. Any changes that need to go over?
No, she left everything the same.
I'd say that, what, $1,500?
Yep. Base period $1,500.
One-year contract?
Yep.
I'll make a...
Effective January 1 of 2024 and terminating December 31, 2024. So it looks like it's the same agreement. Which word that we've always been running with him, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Second.
We have a motion in the second for the approval of the joint powers agreement for provision of emergency management services from Mary Singer and Burley County. Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joint Powers Agreement approved.
The item number three is quitclaim deeds for that car property, two parcels that were tax delinquing. They, the deeds turned over to the county come up till the second. They come in and paid their taxes since then, so now you have to approve for the deeds to be transferred over to them from the county.
So we're needing it back to them because they came in and paid?
Yep.
Okay. Joe, did you draft these?
I just reviewed them.
Okay, so you looked over them at least or checked them out, or anything's going to...
Will you not, I think he has notarized our signatures, right? I don't know.
I will, yeah, I suppose.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve table or deny the quitclaim deed for David and Tania Clark. It's for that property in Hague on the west end town.
Westfield.
Westfield.
Westfield. West of Westfield.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Okay. Commissioner Hall makes a motion to approve both quitclaim deeds for Clarks. Because there was two parcels, right? There was the parcel the house was on, and there was like another lot next to it or something? Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any more discussion on the quitclaim deeds? From Westfield. Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deeds approved?
Yes.
Oh. Sir.
Okay, tax abatement for parcel 38-0000-01280-009.
Well, that's about that Stan Cars house down by Rice Lake.
Okay, so it's just like a...
He came in and requested a reassessment. Wayne went out and reassessed it and lowered it down to 69, lowered it by 69,900, so now we have to issue...
Because it's not completed, basically, and stuff too, so, okay.
It was over assessed.
Well, it's completed, I see.
Well, it's completed. Because it doesn't have siding on right now and there's a few other things.
Okay. Motion to approve table or deny abatement for the car property down by Rice Lake.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abatement approved. We can look at the... Flat or lot A, southwest quarter of section 33, township 133, range 78. 13 acres, so it's a sizable lot. It's a small request from them.
Where am I done? I probably threw $300.
Oh, yeah.
It's still in the north end of that yard.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something, everything's blocked, the yard, so, yeah, it's all good. It's got easement going up into their lots and...
Okay, so they're just parceling off the property, basically, then? Okay. Everything seems to be in order. You didn't find any discrepancies, Josh?
Yeah, some of the effects did.
Okay. Just recording issues more than anything, I'm assuming?
We all heard that needs enveloped around.
Okay. And all that, safe and careful?
Yep.
Okay, a motion to approve table or deny the plat for Duane Old House.
Everything's okay?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Plot approved. Next item is the six county commission meeting is December 12th here at the Emmons County Auditorium. I'll be here.
If I chose the auditorium instead of community center, because my partner in crime thinks that we want...
No, that's fine. The auditorium would be good.
December 12th, what is that? Tuesday? At 10 o'clock? How long did that last?
Eh, until noon-ish. Lunch.
Yep. Lunch, pop.
I'll try and make it. I should pay it, I should make it.
No, I'll be there.
And if you're chairman, I should at least be ready here. Be ready here because I don't want to run it.
You know, while I...
Something, you know, to me.
Fence line is the most responsible? No. Funny. Yeah. Last item on the deal is bills. The building is completed.
I need to sign some of the...
I had my, you know, then I started signing some.
Maggie just had two. One, you think that is?
I guess I can roll. Get that. Chair.
They just said, "You're probably..."
Chair's chair is pretty big, sure. That's probably why.
Look out, if you don't want to, you send all that to them.
I'll send them to the chairman again.
We can tell when anything's going to be in this meeting.
We charge the...
It's like a time of the region with the board.
I think I use exactly that.
Careful. Why is it? This is the answer. It's the air vaccine acid and it's going to help.
Okay.
S U G. E. Must have a D.
John D.
All right. Yeah, it's Paul.
John D.
Really?
I think so.
What's indirect cost?
Indirect cost?
Is miscellaneous?
For human services?
Oh, that's what?
Yeah.
Oh.
Indirect cost means the home has a cable that's not included.
Okay.
The water cost $13.
Yeah, so quarters in there and...
I go to the holders.
Yeah. You gotta carry old bucket full.
Yeah, roll it out.
Yeah, just, just look, there's nothing in it at all.
Yeah, no, they're going to go shiver.
Nope, nope. The sun does, but I just wasn't for the bad land, so.
Oh.
Chance to get...
See, you get to take one every seven years.
Well, I just started from there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
You usually still take four to five prep points to get in there?
Still right now.
Really?
They drop them by a ton half.
It used to be, or it says to be at least five mostly, kind of.
Are you guys on that?
Hey. Good morning, too.
Veterans Day?
Veterans.
Oh.
Veterans.
Oh.
I was thinking that. I think Veterans Day.
Veterans is on Saturday.
It's on Saturday, it's very, very...
Close on Friday again.
We'll make an extra day, and suppose on Friday too?
I don't say.
No.
Twice as much work the next week.
We're going to be working all weekend this weekend, so weather's too nice. What's the saying? You got to make the day where sunshine, right, Perry?
Yeah. Say I don't want any more. Usually a nightfall will get us all... All apart.
No, I, I told everybody, we're working this weekend as nice as it is. We'll take a break when it starts snowing again, so. Oh, we probably would have been caught up, but that snow killed us there.
Yeah, yeah.
Put us back. We were at a pace to, you know, be just busy. Now we're back this long because we lost the...
Yeah, I lost a week of it, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know. Especially because October is such a productive month, there's, you know, bugs, you know, like...
Yeah, no ticks.
It's easier to, we're right, everything's a little bit easier, so. Yeah, hurts.
I'm still cold from staying, I'm sorry.
I thought that door was done at Hazelton. It wasn't yet.
No, it wasn't done yet.
It wasn't? I thought that was.
Okay, because so what they did on the one, I didn't realize they were going to do this, but it was an awesome idea. So they took the old overhead door, because that had the push door, the pole doors on the other end. Since Midwest Doors was there, they took the old roll-up door, framed it out on that west end and turned that into a roll-up door, and then put a new door in. I don't know if they finished it all. Because Skylar and John told me that one day, and said it was going to be a little bit extra. I said, "Yeah, but that's a very good idea, because otherwise that door was going to go to the waste". And those wholehearted doors were so miserable, heavy and stupid. So now they, I don't know, I haven't been there since they worked on it again, but I was down there the one day, and they were framing out the other ends to do a roll-up, so. That was a smart idea, but I don't know, they might have not finished because they might have had something...
Well, they must have, because it's built for $11,000.
Well, that was probably the, because the whole door, I think, was going to, that was actually pretty close to the price then. It was like $10,000 or $11,000, I remember. Would that make that?
They bid out for fuel?
I think they called it guidance.
They do.
I think they need this fuel.
Big jump, yeah.
I think they, the minimum is two, they got to get some. Well, we didn't ever do it, even though...
It would have been there.
We were actually on track. We didn't go over that part of the mountain. It started out bad, but cut it back on the back, I guess. Very well, Francis would have took his time with that. I would have put his thoughts on it. Because we were behind the line at that point, so he would have taken it in the back, I would have, yeah, I would have. So yeah, it kind of helped out. Dan Bradshaw, I heard, who's in that one, and they lay out the road there. It's nice to come here early. Little fast.
Signature car. You know, there's these people using credit card, the credit card?
Yeah. Derek Duncan Beach has one, Darren has one, Scarlett has one. And then we have one in the, uh, uh, where else? You have to check out.
With John Ickmack's names on this, did he go to Bismarck and hook this up on?
Well, he at least ordered it, he didn't, I don't know. There's a Martin Pension Center. You know what's really crazy? You don't even recognize most of the names on it. Or maybe the same people that were, I mean, I know one or two, right? Like the ones that, there's three people that rented for 30 days. I don't know any of them then. That's what's crazy, when you're paying, paying money to people.
And Josh, do you know?
I'll get it. Um, there, I'm going to be far away from the camera. Huh? What is, what are you talking about? Are you serious? Yeah? Are you really?
Chairman told me I had to.
Well, we had a forum. We had to have somebody out there, and there was 30 people out there.
I wasn't even like 40, and someone said, "Hey, can you hold your iPhone and record it"? People out there were like, "Oh, we're about to end".
There wouldn't have been any audio.
I thought there was a cooler up there.
40 mile an hour, and it was all out there, and yeah.
It wasn't even the cooler we had there.
They even showed us a hanger and stuff.
Gave us a plane ride. It was pretty awesome.
Sure.
There's no way I'd have got on a plane in that room. There is.
You missed out.
I got motion cameras of the house. I got alert, there was my garden stand going across and...
No way.
I was working at somebody's house yesterday, and they got a, like, motion sensor camera light thing, and every time it started recording, it goes, "You are now being recorded". I haven't gone, anything without, like, heck, I'd have to hear that. It's like, geez.
Oh, by the way, you guys are still being clear.
Yeah, good.
No, it's just for those low paid people.
Rubber bands.
That's driving?
Yes, those concrete sand walls that you said?
That's how much it's on it?
Yeah.
Wow. Was it cheap?
No, it wasn't. Did you go up to the Association of Commerce Convention though? You did?
I did, because they now, you know, they changed the meetings all from Sunday to Monday at noon. How's the voting going to go then, with the company?
No, I just went to the, I went to the DOT meeting. I quit the crowd there though, and it was a, it was a beautiful day. I shouldn't even have been at the DOT meeting, but I knew I better go, but, man, it was nice, so. I had a bunch of...
Stay overnight. I'd open every night.
I had a bunch of junk to pick up in Bismarck anyway, so it kind of worked out. I went and did my stuff.
Probably some, you know, the new Secretary of State, that meeting, that is not a good stuff. This, you know, I had, I didn't get above that stuff.
New sale. Why would we be getting new sale? What would that be?
Oh, that's rude oil, I bet. Oh, that's down here.
Yeah, that's their base up there.
Oh. Is that rude oil?
They're from, they're out, I didn't know that. They're out of New Salem, huh?
Is it rude oil on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the...
Oh, I just see New Salem.
They actually have Napa here.
Uh, that's why it's like, what the hell?
I live in my town here.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, they, Clinton and them are driving, I don't know the ownership structure, but they're, I know Clint's like the manager, and I think rude oil actually
Right.
technically runs or owns that building and stuff.
Is that the deal?
Mm-hmm.
This one, I got to sign this one. Aaron?
May I? Feel for me? Yeah. Actually forgot I did that, which is why I went around those pumping septic tanks before the snow one. I went over, I think I did that one on Sunday.
Yeah.
Because I was, I wasn't about to try and do, but that felt like, that was like a year ago already. That was a, that was a long month. That's right, because that was out of your place that day too.
Right.
Craig had all the kids out there, slave labor, picking potatoes.
Really?
Yeah. It's family fun day, picking potatoes before it snows. I remember that one. Dad had his giant garden too, and then you'd hear a snow, and you're like, "We got to get out", or we'd spend all day in the garden.
You guys take them off my hand, please?
Yeah, yeah.
And the slides before?
How much?
I mean, five.
Oh, I have no idea how many plants are working.
You guys have a lot of taters, I know that.
Yeah.
That trailer was full.
Yeah.
I have 30 plants.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm sure you've had 10 times as many.
Yeah, it's probably pretty close to that. She breezed around a lot of the little ones.
Did you wonder?
Both. Or not, we should.
I believe all colored photos now.
Or was it flowers?
I, um, I don't do red, but when I went to buy some this year, I picked best stuff. I bought two white ones. Didn't know until we were planted, I said, "These don't look like red, but they look..." They grew just good.
It tastes good. Do you need help with that anywhere?
I'm gonna do it down here in the auditorium.
Right.
Um. The girls will, I'll, I'll get everything in the, I'll get everything ready, and the girls will come and watch it.
He wants a couple pies baked or something.
You don't go all that.
All right. Just ask him.
No, we usually just do, sometimes just do a soup and salad. I mean, just cookies or something, I don't think that.
That's my red bush bill, that was from the Beaver Bay Fund, right, that was their hugest facility, okay. Well, they want to put specials on that, huh? He says the email, the last email I read.
That's so good.
I don't even, I mean, I. It's first time for everything, but I don't know how that process all works, there's, there's an extensive process to do, you gotta do a specialist district. And then the one thing that. I looked into is that, like, I don't believe the county can do the work on specials. You have to hire that out. So, like, if they want the county to maintain it, they think just adding specials will work, don't think we can. Like, you can't charge specials, then go in and do it and.
Is there any like funds or something like that?
I, all I know is when I seen it, that it said that the, um. I want to say it has some kind of language where like, the entity that is doing the specials cannot do the work, so like. I don't think we can like, charge a special, then go in there and do the work ourselves, like, we have to hire it out, that's like the accountability, checks and balances thing. It has to be engineered too, so I don't think you can do specials for maintenance, you have to do specials for like, a project, so. But, I mean, it sounds good that we're just gonna charge specials, but I don't, I don't know if that would solve their problem, I mean, maybe it would, but. You can't, from the way I read it, you can't charge specials, then go in for like, glating and gravel, it has to be like, culverts, bridges. Signs, you know, whatever, like, when they do a big. Well, I'm sure it's real good, but I'm just saying, like, the little bit that I read, it's usually, it's like a bunch of engineered, contracted projects, so. I don't know. But I don't think it's a silver bullet, like some people. Welcome, sir. Baby here in seventeen thirty-five.
There's, is there something, there's gonna be another.
That was the one thing I had seen. I'm gonna see what some other part with it, baby.
Was there anything else attached to that?
There was another one that had, it put that, it had the paper, it was, no, that was Wayne Neely, that lady that worked with him. So that was different, yeah, so I don't know what's.
What that means.
Julie, there's a voucher. Is there any?
No.
And that may that, so. Okay, let's play one just for seventeen minutes and then back sixteen. Okay, so scrap that up, baby. If you want, yeah. She's gonna stop.
Oh, so there was another part?
No, it's supposed to only be eighty.
Oh, it is only supposed to be.
Yeah, she, she. Then you got to.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've seen eighty here.
She. She must have added somebody else to the cable for that. That's, we'll change, it didn't only be eighty.
Don't we roll the bands down?
I threw them all in the box.
Oh, I'll leave her.
She says she's gonna bring it up.
Was it, uh, oh, you have to see some. Anderson. A ditch.
Um, I'm scratched out, I just. Okay. I think I wrote. Awesome. Yeah, so.
In the area where we borrow some, something like that, or? What's that?
That's what I'm getting.
Yeah, the net. Oh. Okay, so. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
Then probably just the, uh. It's probably just a mistake on the counting or something.
Well, Mr. Chair. Take the rush.
Well, if you want to make a motion to adjourn.
Because I'll make a motion to adjourn.
He is adjourned.
I gotta be up.